Ladies and gentlemen, the cameras have been turned on, the microphones also turned on. Good evening and welcome to tonight's special city council meeting. I kindly ask our clerk to please take the roll.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilberg?
Katsarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Meyer?
Mayor.
Persky?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin this council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask Alder Person Bowring to lead us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alder Person Bowring. We have but one item on the agenda this evening, folks. Prior to entertaining a motion and a second to put this matter on the floor, I do want to read a statement. The council members will be familiar with parts of this statement, but for the benefit of those joining us and here in the audience, and of course, either online or via local broadcast channels, please heed the following. This evening, the city council will consider Resolution Number 2023-102, which is the owner-applicant's appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission's determination on August 15, 2023, to deny approval of a demolition permit request and the de-designation of the historic landmark located at 4 East State Street in the City of Geneva, Illinois. The city code provision for an appeal of any determination by the commission is found within Section 10-6-10 (A10). Quote, "Appeal of a demolition denial to city council. If an application for any demolition work is not approved by the Historic Preservation Commission, then the applicant may request in writing to the Director of Community Development that an appeal of the commission's decision be made to the city council. Both the applicant and the commission have the right to be heard at the appeal proceedings. Upon consideration of the written record of the commission's decision and the applicant's appeal, the city council shall grant or deny the application for proposed demolition work within 30 calendar days after such an appeal is made. The city council shall, by resolution, affirm or reverse the commission's determination according to the applicable standards set forth in this chapter. In accordance with said standards, the city council may also modify the commission's determination. A reversal or modification of the commission's determination shall be approved by a vote of not less than two-thirds of the alderperson's holding office." Now, please note, the separate reference to the word "modify" in the code relating to the HPC's decision as it appears in the code is relevant only if, only if... Only if the Preservation Commission had placed conditions on its determination, which in this instance, the Historic Preservation Commission did not. Because no conditions were attached to the Historic Preservation Commission's denial recommendation, there is nothing for the council to modify, leaving the council only to determine if the Historic Preservation Commission's denial decision on August 15, 2023 was proper. Because the council is sitting as a semi-judiciary and appellate capacity rather than in its more traditional legislative capacity, it's important that everyone understands and respects the standards by which the council... By which the council must act. Couple highlights here, folks, for your benefit, and they are as follows. Because the council is sitting, as stated, as a review body and is confined to the evidence within the underlying record, the council is limited to either upholding the determination of the Historic Preservation Commission, or if errors are found, reverse the Historic Preservation Decision. Those allowed to speak tonight include and only include the applicant and a respondent from the Historic Preservation Commission. There is no public comment tonight. The entire public comment is on record and was adduced through the processes of the Historic Preservation Commission. The question tonight is, as stated in the motion, whether to reverse or to affirm the Historic Preservation's commission. Is everyone clear on that? Any questions for the city attorney? With that, I'll happily entertain a motion. Is there such a motion on Item 1? Marx, seconded by Mayor, and just for clarity, folks, and please notice the language in this motion. The motion is to consider Resolution Number 2023-102 reversing the August 15, 2023 determination of the Historic Preservation Commission to deny a request for demolition and de-designation of the historic landmark located at 4 East State Street. Therefore, a vote of "aye" means that you have chosen to reverse. A vote of "nay" means you have chosen to stay the Historic Preservation Commission's This matter is on the floor. I kindly invite representatives of the Shodin Foundation, invite you to the podium, and the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you all for your patience. I know this has been difficult and longstanding. I trust you all have reviewed the record in detail, and so I'm not going to go through an ordeal on highlighting those points in the record that I think are important because I trust you have reviewed and read them. I would love nothing more than to say something incredibly profound and incredibly persuasive so that all of you would have a light bulb in your head and say, yep, you know, you're right. This structure needs to be demolished. But I know that there's no such thing that I can say that would be that persuasive. All I can do is identify for you all thoughts to consider, because at the end of the day, this process has been troubling. The obvious question here is, why did we appeal? And we appealed, in a nutshell, because there are four conditions, only one of which Historic Preservation had defined in order for the demolition permit to be approved. It will be my contention forever that the evidence presented was sufficient to prove one, if not multiple, of those conditions. And I'm just going to very briefly identify those four conditions and just pinpoint the evidence that was identified. I know you're all aware of the four conditions. The first condition, under the ordinance specifically, 10-10-6, requires that an inspection be performed. It requires that the inspection be performed by the preservation planner and the City of Geneva building official, the code enforcement officer, and the chief of police, and the fire chief. That's what the ordinance says. It doesn't say "may." It says that inspection, upon our demolition request, that inspection shall take place. Unfortunately, the City of Geneva determined that, per the ordinance, they had a discretionary option to actually do that inspection. And in fact, the letter specifically indicated that because there were no occupants and because the city determined there was not a threat to safety, they were not going to perform the inspection. The ordinance does not say you get to choose. It says the inspection shall occur, and the city chose not to do it. It's my contention and the applicant's contention that that was a fundamental legal flaw in the process, and that fundamental legal flaw has consequences. So that's number one. Number two, that, number two reflects or requests evidence that the building or structure is a deterrent to a major improvement program that will be of substantial benefit to the community. Again, unfortunately, what the evidence reflected was that those individuals interested in developing the property, and I know you all are familiar with the Charette process and all the various iterations of options that have been looked at over the years, but five years in, each of the individuals or entities that came to the applicant with interest in developing the property said, no, we're not going to go forward with any application or any kind of development opportunity as long as that structure is there and you are prohibited from doing anything further. Third, the retention of the structure will cause undue hardship and all other feasible alternatives to eliminate the financial hardship have been attempted and exhausted by the applicant. This is obviously a hot topic, and the fact of the matter is, the practical reality of all of this is, even all of us in our collective wisdom cannot come up with every single alternative and exhaust that alternative. Yes, everybody had great ideas. I don't think there's anyone here that would say, all the people that came before the Historic Preservation Commission with ideas, all great ideas. I can think of 100 things I would love to see with that. But the fact of the matter is, at no point in five years has anybody come and said, we're willing to pay to develop this property, and this is how we want to do it. That hasn't happened. We have been approached, we have been approached by multiple parties, both as to development, both as to removal, both as to, let's take it apart and put it together someplace else. And in all of those instances, not one of those were deemed to be feasible, nor was anyone willing to come forward and fight this fight on behalf of the development of the property. The assumption is, at the end of the day, and the assumption that was clear and stated in the record by the Historic Preservation Commission, this is, this is the Shodin Foundation. They can do anything. They can come up with anything. This is merely a function of creativity. No, it's not a function of creativity. It's a function of, of a structure that is no longer in existence. It is a function of rock and stone that is disintegrating, and it is not disintegrating as a result of anything the developer has done or the owner has done. It is disintegrating. There is no, there are no utilities. There are no functional positives, other than for a period of time between 1842 and 1860, it was a blacksmith shop. We're literally fighting about something that results in maybe a couple decades of a blacksmith shop that no longer existed. It became a paint shop, yet we continue to call it the last remaining blacksmith shop. It didn't remain after 1860. It was gone. And that sort of leads to the fourth, and the fourth one, the fourth condition is the hardest one of all. The fourth condition is the retention of the structure is not in the best interest of the community. Well, I think it is, goes without saying, that that is a completely subjective analysis, but really, can we all ask ourselves, is that what we want to see when we drive into Geneva? And we've been looking at it for five years. This is part of a TIF. This is already in the TIF. The whole purpose, as you all know, of a TIF is to stimulate redevelopment in a blighted area. The fact is, this should not be the gateway to Geneva, and I honestly believe, or I wouldn't be here, I honestly believe the City of Geneva can do better. And I believe with the, based on what we've heard every day from multiple people, at the end of the day, there are some projects that even if the structure is old, that doesn't necessarily make it historic. We can do better with this property, and if the demolition permit is approved, the impediment to all of us doing better with this property is removed. So I would ask all of you to seriously consider the resolution as it is put before you today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
As permitted under the Review Board policies, we have a representative of the Historic Preservation Commission, Jewel Jensen, who will now address the special city council. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. I'm Jewel Jensen, a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. I am presenting on behalf of the commission and standing in for chairperson Paul Zelmer, who is traveling on business tonight. Over the course of seven months, the commission heard hours of testimony and opinions expressed by both the applicant and interested individuals. Tonight, on behalf of the commission, I would like to share with you a summary of our key findings, reports, and testimonies that we reviewed. The commission does recognize that historical and cultural significance of the historic landmark at 4 East State Street. These early buildings are tied to our community's earliest settlement and are rare resources within the Geneva community. The unassuming modest limestone building is the earliest surviving example of the water-powered industries that once lined the Fox River. It has served as a respected carriage and wagon shop, a barrel-making factory, and a laundry, among other businesses. The designated building also represented many occupations that were very important in the 19th century, like the blacksmiths, wheelwrights, Coopers, and laundrier. In addition to its historical significance, it also has a cultural significance as a symbol of some of our first immigrants, the Swedish immigrants. The current exposed stone structure is significant because it is the very building that housed Anne Forsyte's original Mill Race Inn, a woman-owned business that was encouraged and nurtured by Kate Rafferty, who owned the Little Traveler. The Mill Race Inn was a seasonal café established in 1933 in the depths of the Great Depression. The commission also recognizes that the 4 East State Street property was identified in the 2008 Historical Preservation Plan adopted by the city council. It was one of the 63 properties or groups that should be landmarked and protected in accordance with the Preservation Plan's goals and objectives. The Preservation Plan specifically identified the significance of the identified property's important role in illustrating how Genevaans have lived through the years. The Historic Preservation Commission recognizes the importance and the strategic location of the designated landmark. It is located at a key redevelopment site along the Fox River, at the east end of the State Street Bridge and adjacent to Island Park. The commission acknowledges that 4 East State Street was identified as Opportunity Site 6 in the 2012 Downtown Station Area Master Plan adopted by the city council. The commission understands the common goal that were identified through the Charette design process several years ago. So, the issue of historical significance has been established. However, the commission also recognizes that little has been done by the Shodin Family Foundation to maintain or preserve the historic building since 2016, when many deteriorated additions were removed from the historic, unassuming modest little limestone structure. With little to no intervention, the property as it stands has an unsightly appearance at a key gateway to our beautiful and historic commercial district. The maintenance and unsightliness of the property is beyond the control of the Historic Preservation Commission. Therefore, the Historic Preservation Commission was tasked with making a determination based on relevant information provided through sworn testimony related to the specific request for relief due to economic infeasibility. Over the course of the seven months, the commissioner heard hours and hours of testimony and opinions expressed by the applicant, professionals, and interested individuals. A significant number of residents and interested individuals and organizations spoke in favor of preserving this important piece of history. Very few individuals spoke in favor of destroying the iconic historic structure that occupies a small corner of a larger redevelopment site. The underlying message of the public were that once a historic place is demolished, it can never be retrieved. The community believes a viable and creative option exists to preserve the historic stone building in a manner that allows creative redevelopment of the larger parcel. We also listened to testimony from the applicant. They stated any development of the site will require significant financial participation from the City of Geneva. General consensus of the commission was that if financial partnering will be required, some of those public monies should go towards the preservation and adaptive use of the historic limestone blacksmith shop building. The commission reviewed the building assessment study prepared on behalf of the applicant by Atlas Works, an architectural firm with historical preservation expertise. Although the report identified building elements that were distressed and/or deteriorated, the report did not conclude that the historic limestone structure is structurally unsound or in immediate danger of collapse. The applicant's demolition request included a pro forma statement along with comparable properties in the general marketplace. Applicants submitted identified only one rehabilitation scenario to justify its assertion of financial infeasibility. Applicants' analysis did not include the use of any state or federal tax credits, nor potential public or private grant funding, nor follow the process to request TIF funds. In an effort to fully understand, the applicants submitted pro forma statement, the commission requested professional assistance. The Timo Tesca Associates in the Plenera Group was engaged by the City of Geneva to provide an expert analysis of the applicant-submitted pro forma statement. The professional evaluations identified areas of agreement with the applicant, but concluded that reasonable development scenarios that produced a viable return on investment were possible, but had not been fully investigated by the applicant prior to seeking demolition of the historic landmark building. So, per City Code 10-6-10, demolition shall be considered only when all other redevelopment options for a building, structure, object, improvement, or site have been exhausted. On August 15, 2023, the Historic Preservation Commission deliberated the facts and testimony provided during the public hearing in accordance with the adapted city code. Upon a motion to deny the request for demolition and de-designation of the historic landmark located at 4 East State Street on August 15, 2023, the Historic Preservation Commission identified findings of fact summarized as follows. I'll be listing these facts, and then after my presentation, I'll give each of you a copy for your review. The historic landmark, number one, the historic landmark structure is not a deterrent to a major improvement project for which all required approvals have been secured as stipulated in the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Number two, the building does not pose a safety threat to the general public because the site is fenced and windows are boarded. Number three, the rehabilitation of the designated structure appears to be technically feasible. Number four, the applicant did not demonstrate that all reasonable redevelopment options utilizing available talent and creativity have been exhausted prior to requesting demolition of the historic landmark. Number five, the applicant did not investigate alternative funding sources prior to requesting demolition of the historic landmark. Number six, Tesca Associates and the Plenera Group identified a path for financial feasibility for the repurposing of the historic landmark structure. Number seven, based on the information presented and testimony provided, preservation of the historic landmark has not been proven to be an economic hardship for the applicant. And number eight, demolition of the historic landmark is not favored by the majority of the community based on testimony provided. Consequently, in following months of testimony for and against the applicant's request, all seven members of the Historic Preservation Commission rejected the applicant's request for demolition of the historic landmark at 4 East State Street and the subsequent designation of the site. Tonight, you are tasked with reviewing the existing written record of the now-closed public hearing. You have been asked to either uphold the commission's determination, or if this council believes that the commission erred in its review and application of the adopted ordinance, reverse the commission's determination. That said, a multitude of options and viewpoints, informed and uninformed, will continue to exist concerning the future of the historic landmark property. On behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission, I respectfully request that the city council uphold the determination of the commission and reject the applicant's appeal of our commission's 7 to 0 determination. Thank you, and I will hand out our findings so that you can review them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, that's fine, no problem at all, don't worry about me. Members of the city council, the floor is open for questions from you. Your questions can be directed to either the applicant or the Historic Preservation Commission. Alder Person Ruby, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I actually have a question probably for our lawyer. Roberts Rules of Order states motions are to be stated in the affirmative.
Generally, but this is, we're acting in, we are, the council's acting in appellate function here. The motion that was put to the floor was to, because the applicant, I'm sorry.
Pardon me. Because the applicant requested that we consider reversing, that's why the language is such.
That's why it's put that way.
All right, so I just wanted to make sure that it would, whatever we decide tonight isn't going to fall into a loophole of the way it was worded.
Well, I think before voting, we'll make sure everyone understands that an "aye" vote is for reversal, and a "nay" vote is for affirming the HPC ruling.
Sure, okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. From the DAS, any other council members? Alder Person Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. I will try and hew closely to our legal boundaries for this here. One thing I wanted to explore that I believe the petitioner opened the door for him. It is my distinct recollection, Mr. Patzelt, way early on, I don't know, this is probably pre-Charette, this parcel was offered in some form to the Park District?
That's correct.
If, I guess that's all I need, just the record show he said, that is correct. So that, that in itself... So that, in and of itself, to the attorney's point two, deterrent to greater development, if that property had been offered to the Park District, it seems there would have been expectation that they could still make a viable development with the absence of that. The, so again, I'm gonna go through my notes and skip things that I would get indicted The findings of fact, and we are here to just, are the findings of fact correct, and have they explored all possibilities? Findings of fact are spot-on. It is a very historic and notable structure. Relocating or making a monument from the stones would be no more meaningful than just getting new locally quarried stones, so I don't see that as an option. The, now, no TIF monies have been requested for this parcel as yet? Or no?
I'm hesitating because of the germane-ness of that question. Again, tonight, we are determining whether or not we, as a review board, believe the Historic Preservation Commission's determination was okay, or were there errors, period.
But the, the question is...
I'll defer to the city attorney to correct me.
The question is germane to me in that a significant or important mechanism for helping those other developments could be from those public funds. So it would seem primaphasia, prima facie?
So I, I'm not gonna debate the let in your use of prima facie. However, what I will say is the record deduced at the HPC level suggested Mr. Patzelt had conversations, informal conversations about TIF. Ms. Timoshenko stated that no TIF application, and I put that in quotes, but process was ever followed. I will also tell you the record is replete that while discussions were occurring, the demolition application was proceeding.
Right, and, right, and I think that is the right decision. We won't be looking for monies, or we won't be discussing monies for a property which is under threat. I think HPC, you know, nailed it, and I don't think all possibilities have been explored. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderperson Bowring.
So I would agree with what Alderperson Bruno just said. We're looking at a very limited question tonight, and that question is, did the HPC follow the process laid out in the city code? And I believe that they did. I have watched all of the testimony. I have read the relevant documents, and I think the HPC was quite clear in laying out its findings of fact. I think that the city followed a process when the landmark designation was determined, and as with that process, as with this process, we have to follow our processes in order to ensure that everyone understands that they are getting their fair day in front of us. I guess I don't want to go down too many rabbit holes, but I think it's very clear from the testimony that we received from TESCA and Associates and Plenera Group that there are viable options for redevelopment. In addition, Shodin's own testimony demonstrates that they're aware that there is TIF funding potentially available, and they chose not to explore that, but instead to continue with the demolition request. I think that that's also the right decision by staff, that we can't pursue both at the same time. So, in my considered opinion, this demolition request simply does not meet the threshold required for it to be granted. And I will also note that, you know, I think as both the Shodin Group's representative and the HPC's representative indicated, there are many, many people in the community who wish to see something happen on this site, and I do hope that there is a way to partner going forward productively. I know there's a lot of water under that bridge, so to speak, but I, you know, I hope that this demolition request is not taken as an indication of the city's unwillingness to and disinterest in seeing something productive come out of this site. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the dais? I will ask publicly if the council is prepared to vote on this matter. Any clarifying remarks you'd like to ask of myself or the city attorney? Again, please heed the fact that the motion is to consider Resolution Number 2023-102 reversing the August 15, 2023 determination of the Historic Preservation Commission to deny a request for demolition and de-designation of the historic landmark located at 4 East State Street. The motion is to reverse, so a "nay" vote, in essence, means you support the Historic Preservation Commission's determination made on August 15. An "aye" vote is you support and have found error in the HPC's determination and will support the request for demolition and de-designation. Is that clear? Yes, sir?
The moment this comes to a vote, however, it turns out, if denied demolition, there is a one-year cooling-off period, or I don't know what it's called, in ordinance. They can't approach the city for another year?
I've seen that.
Or is that not?
What would not have been?
Oh, yeah, that's probably not germane.
It's not germane. Did you see the stink I got from the city attorney?
You know, I had a lot more to say.
Anyone else clarifying remarks regarding the resolution and the consideration before City Clerk Kellick, please take the roll call.
Marx?
Nay.
Mayor?
Nay.
Pashke?
Nay.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bowring?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kusarag?
Nay.
Maladra?
Nay.
The city council has determined with nine "nay" votes, zero "aye" votes, and one absent, have denied the requests from the applicant. We are at public comment in this special city council meeting. Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding any matter they wish to bring before the council? Ma, you're first, man.
Do I, do I want to just take my name and all that?
Yes, please. Address is not necessary, just the names, just so we have it for the record.
Okay. So my name is Lee Esterlid. I actually live across the street from all of this. I just want to say thank you for the citizens on our side. East side often feels left out. Tonight, we don't. I think you made the right decision. I think you all have been slandered over the last couple of years by the people who are now leaving. They have not represented you well. I think you all do the best you can, mostly voluntarily. You certainly don't make the money to make this worthwhile for money.
I didn't represent anyone. I just came, sorry, but I have to leave. Thank you.
Okay. And therefore, and I won't speak for my wife or I'll get in trouble, but the fact is is that I know a lot of us, we've been meeting on that side, we've been talking about it, we've been trying to get organized as much as we can, but I really think the thoughtfulness that can go into this and what's possible is being made by what you did, and so I just, I won't go at length, but I just wanted to say that I can say that I appreciate it. I know there's a lot of us on the east side that really appreciate it, because the monstrosity they wanted to build would have been a disaster for a number of reasons, and you've made it possible to think about something that will be in the, in the future, I hope, better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Campbell?
My name's Colin Campbell. I live on Sixth Street. Thank you. Thank you very much. We've been engaged in this since 2014, and of course, these things go on and on and on and on. I just wanted to say, and I'm sorry that the people from Shodin's left, I would have liked for them to hear this. The battle over what was to be done at Dodson Place, the old community hospital, went on for over 10 years, and they created a beautiful building that is financially viable, finally, after much pushing by the city in order to get that done. They took a total wreck of the building that was the Howell Iron Works on the north side of State Street at the river between the bridge and the dam, and turned it into the dam bar and the workspace and the riverside banquets, a beautiful building, and it is a reconstruction of something that nobody thought could be reconstructed and redone. They did the same on the south side of the river with the Harrington, the old Kleinbeck Creamery, which again was a total disaster, and it's now the Harrington. This company has been very creative, but you've almost had to hold their heads underwater to get them to be creative, and I'm hopeful that we can go ahead with this. There are numerous things that can be done with that building. It's such a tiny project compared to the things that they have done, and so we're not done with it yet. This was a great step forward, and I thank you for that. Let's keep pushing them, see how good they can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Zinke, then we'll go back to Mrs. E. How's that? And I'm gonna ask Mrs. E. to spell the last name so we have it correct in the minutes, too.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I am a former member of the Historic Preservation Commission. My husband Fred is the gentleman who filled out the initial application for the, for the building to be considered a local landmark. Historic preservation is something that we, in my house, have talked about for our entire married life. My husband was the planner in Oak Park, and if you know anything about Oak Park, at one time, people were writing off Oak Park as, for a place to be a slum, but now it's one of the most beautiful suburbs that we have, and historic preservation is a big deal there. So personally, I would like to thank you. This has not been an easy thing to think about. The Shodins can be, I don't want to say difficult people to, to, to work with, but they...
I'm gonna interrupt just for a moment, Mrs. Zinke. I want everyone in the room to know that there are still representatives of the Shodin Foundation present in this building.
Okay, okay.
So you might want to just be advised of that.
Yes, yes.
So that we speak.
Well, what I was trying to say is that they have done, they have done wonderful things in town, and I hope that after some consideration, that they will continue to do wonderful things for those of us on the east side, and I thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zinke. Next up, hi.
I'm Erica Esterlid, E-Y-S-T-U-R-L-I-D, like Delta, and I'm sure you're like both of you this evening, but I, part of it is, as a longtime public educator, I don't, I know you folks don't get to hear thank you enough, so thank you for considering all the information and being thoughtful about it and listening to the community for those of us who are very interested, invested in that historic preservation. So I know it's not been difficult, we've been at many of the meetings, to hear, to hear all the information, but I just want to say thank you for considering it, and I think there is opportunity to save this building and to think about a creative way to use it. I grew up in a house where my parents were involved with historic preservation in Indiana, and I've been in some places that were told later that we shouldn't have been in, that were structurally unsound, but yet they're still standing many, many years later and have been revitalized and reused, so I would hope that can, that we can move forward and consider that in this opportunity. But again, thank you for listening this evening and making what I believe to be the correct decision.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we're gonna jump to new business by the council. Any council member wish to share any new business with us and for the benefit of the community? Just a reminder, we do have a meeting on Monday, October 2nd. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Marx, excuse me, Alderperson Marx makes the motion. All in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. The microphones are off, and the cameras have been turned off as well.